I'd like to call to order the public hearing for fiscal year 24 budget. Budget is on the screen. This has been worked on for a few months now. One, I want to thank the town staff for their hard work and time putting together what I feel is a very good budget. The general budget is $1,046,384. The enterprise budget is $1,346,155. Total budget is 2.392 million. Couple of things that we see a little difference. Real property is up 65,000, real property tax is up $65,000. That's because of increase in homes at Snyder Summit. Highway user revenue, that's up $57,000. But however, in the enterprise fund, we saw decrease in our budget for water and sewer hookup fees because development is completed. So we're not seeing any revenue from that. Couple other highlights, capital budget is seeing, in the capital budget, project budget in a general fund, $117,686 is projected. And in enterprise fund, under capital project budget, $74,303 for a total of 191,989 projected for potential future projects. Two of the main highlights that I'd like to say, no tax increase and no water and sewer rate increase. So at this time, I'll open the floor open to the council members if they have any questions or comments. Hearing none, seeing none. Thank you for your hard work on, working on this. We made a few changes. And again, thank the town staff. Is there anyone from the community that has any questions about the budget? Hearing none and seeing none? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing for fiscal year 24 budget?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for fiscal 24 budget.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing for fiscal year 24 budget. All those in favor, sing, finally, sing aye. Aye. Those opposed? So carried, closed meeting. Now, our meeting's adjourned. Now, I'd like to call to order the town council meeting, town of New Windsor, for May 3rd, 2023. If everyone would rise, and you don't have to. Join with me in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our meetings are recorded electronically. We go by agenda. Anyone wishing to have something placed on the agenda for council review and comments and discussion should have had it to town hall the previous Wednesday of the month by 3:00 PM. Anyone wishing to speak tonight, we ask you to sign over there on the signup sheet. Anyone wishing to talk will be called upon from that sheet and that sheet only, and you will have three minutes in which to speak. I will time that three minutes, and that will, once you, three minutes is up, that is it. So, I believe we go to the minutes. Approval of minutes from the April 5th, 2023 town council meeting. Not 22, 2023 town council meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes from the April 5th, 2023 town council meeting. Comments or questions? All those in favor, sing, finally, sing aye. Aye. Those against? So approved. At this time, I want to go out of order just a little bit to recognize a couple of people. And if you would take a picture. Sharon, front and center. Last meeting. However, we thank you for your two years of service to the town. You stepped up to the plate. We greatly appreciate it, and we thank you for everything you've done, especially beautification day, and I'm holding you to it for the next two years, that you will come back and help us with beautification day and plan that for us. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, did not. But present it to Sharon Griffin-Lenman, Town Council 2021 to 2023, in recognition of two years of outstanding service and dedication to the town of New Windsor.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Well, I had something written on my, so I'll read to you.
All right. And Gary, can we see Gary on the screen?
That's right.
I didn't want to wait another two weeks because you've already passed your five years with us to present it to Gary Dye Jr., 2018, 2023, in recognition of five years of outstanding service to the town of New Windsor. Thank you, Gary. We greatly appreciate all you've done in the last five years.
Thank you all.
Do another official presentation at our work session, but I just didn't want to wait any longer for that. Mayor's report, busy month, especially networking. Answered, I think I mentioned this at probably last month maybe, but answered additional questions for the U.S. senators for earmarked request of $2 million to upgrade our wastewater treatment plant, followed up with both Senator Cardon and Van Hollen's staff on the earmarked request, and both of the senators have forwarded our $2 million request onto appropriations. So what the conversation I had today, in the email I got back, was that hopefully, fall of '23 or winter of '24, depending on how fast Congress goes, we'll just leave it at that, they'll make decisions. So I'm hoping that, you know, we can get $2 million, and even if they were to cut it back to a million, that would be a tremendous help to the town. I mentioned before that I've invited Governor Moore to come out and meet with us and tour the town, and I talked to, I followed up a couple times with his staff, and then today I had a real nice conversation, phone conversation with Governor Moore's Deputy of Intergovernmental Affairs, Dylan Goldberg. He's been on the job for, I think, I don't know if he said one week or two weeks, two weeks. So he's taken over this position. He's from Howard County. He knows Carroll County very well, especially the Sykesville area. So he wants to come up and have breakfast, dinner, or lunch or something with me, and then he's also planning on attending our MML chapter meetings, and he seems very personal, and he has from Carroll County West. So he has a big area, but, you know, being close to home, hopefully. He seemed real energetic, so looking forward to meeting him. And then also had a conversation with Congressman Dutch Reffler's Burgers staff, that should be staff there, but about the appropriations, and get a little better understanding of who to talk to since we are now in his district for the first time. After Lions Club last Wednesday, well, the Lions Club had delegate Chris Tomlinson there to present the citation for the 75th charter of the Lions Club. He was unable to attend our charter night due to the fact that he was in session that night. However, he came out and he discussed, had a nice presentation about what took all, took place in Annapolis and what he's done, and then we talked probably for a half hour, and I talked to him about the streetscape and different things. So I sent him a lot of information, and he also wanted the funding request that we presented to a delegation so that he can start working on that for next year. So we got things moving all ready for the next general assembly session, even though it just ended. Planned and organized the town council candidate forum. Thank our two council members that showed up. Greatly appreciate your support in that and your participation. Submitted a $3 million funding request to the county through the Parks and Rec for a park at the Open Space off of Gear Lane, the five, five-plus acres down there that was underwater sewer, or lagoon area, but it's probably, what'd you tell me, Gary, about 20 acres altogether? I can't remember now, 15, 20, but ended up asking for 3 million. They meet later this month, and then they would take it, it would basically be for capital improvements over like, I think, a five-year plan they have. So, well, now we get that, and I have justification for it, I feel. You know, they closed three schools a few years ago. I think everybody remembers that. The, my philosophy is that they, the county commissioners helped with North Carroll High School, put the sheriff's office in the training, well, not the office, but the training center there, spent money there. They worked with a group to open up a nice sports complex that I think, to my understanding, is going to be a few million dollars pumped into that area. They spent $7.2 million over in Charles Carroll to take care of the loss of that school, and $3 million, I feel, to help take the loss of New Windsor Middle School, because eventually, when the school grows, I don't feel we'll have access to the athletic facilities there. So I feel that we have it justified, whether or not that happens or not. And then also wrote a support letter for Mike Reynolds for the Maryland Town Manager Circuit Rider Program. That has been crucial for, for our staff, I believe. He's been an asset to us, especially grant management. And then also want to thank everybody that showed up for assisting with the town beautification day Saturday. So I think things look a lot nicer. Thank you, Sharon, again. Any questions or comments from the council? That is my report. All right, committee reports. Community enhancement, Councilwoman Griffin-Lenman.
Aye, good evening, everybody. And first of all, I'd like to also give a huge thank you to everyone who came out and helped last Saturday on our town beautification day. It was a lot of fun, and a whole lot of work was done. We were able to weed, plant, and mulch at Gazebo Park on the corner of Main Street and Route 75, at Fountain Park on the corner of Main and High Streets, at Veterans Park by Town Hall, and by the sign for Lions Club off Lambert Avenue. So we did a lot, and if this weather would just break a little bit and we get a little warmth, I'm sure a lot of flowers are going to be bursting up there. The other thing I wanted to mention was that it is my understanding the hometown hero banners will probably be hung in the next two weeks to have them up in time for Memorial Day. And finally, I would just like to say that it has truly been an honor and a privilege to have served on this council. Sorry. Thank you so much to the mayor and to the members of the council and to the whole town staff who helped me learn and navigate all of the intricacies of my job, and thank you to the many residents of New Windsor who would see me walking in the mornings and chat with me about the happenings here. This experience has served to reinforce for me and my family why we moved to New Windsor 32 years ago and why we have made it our home ever since. So please stop by and see me at Griggs Gallery and Studio, which is right behind my house, because that's where I'm going to be. Thank you all.
Public Works, Councilman Huffman.
Good evening, everyone. So Public Works, they have been trying to be busy mowing. They've been trying to keep up between the rain showers. So you know, many of the areas that they, they mow remain wet for days after it rains. So it would be unsafe for them to get in there and mow until it dries out. So, so please be patient. If you see some of our areas that typically are nice and refined cut and they haven't got to it, it's most likely because they're still waiting for it to dry out, but they will get to it. Public Works spent much of the month being on site as the street paving process progressed. Unfortunately, we had a few water leaks. The fact that they were there, they were able to immediately address those water leaks during the project. Being on site allowed for quick diagnosis and repair and kept the paving project on schedule. So shout out to the Public Works crew for that. Remember, yard waste is picked up on the first and third Thursday of each month. Please keep your bags and cans under 40 pounds, and if you can, please cover the cans so they don't collect the rainwater and gain that extra weight, so they, they get quite heavy as they get saturated with rain. And also, this Saturday, May 6th, is bulk trash day. Residents should bring their items to the Public Works facility located on Gear Lane between the hours of 8:00 and 12:00. Bulk trash is for large items that cannot go into the regular trash pickup. There'll be no paint cans, concrete, tires, or building materials accepted. So the planning commission, we did meet in April. We approved the letter stating that the projects that the town council is considering funding with Project Open Space money are consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. This approval letter is a necessary milestone in order to use the POS money. We also continued the review of the comprehensive master plan, and the next scheduled planning commission meeting is on May 22nd.
Thank you, sir. Water and Sewer, Councilman Hall.
So I echo Councilman Huffman's statements. There was some water leaks on, during the project, with any project, old pipes and all that movement of the soil, you're going to have leaks. So as a plus side to that, one of the things that was able to be done is the valves were changed, so if there's ever any future issues, the ability for the town Public Works to shut off certain sections increases, so that's, that's a positive there. In other news, in Hillside Wells, the drilling crew was out there today, and although the outputs were a little lower than what we expected, the, the positive there is with the new pump being delivered soon, we'll have two wells operational in Hillside. So there's been one well operational for years. Getting that second well back online will be helpful for, for our long-term plan. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety, Councilman Cornick.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Relatively quiet month, public safety and health concerns wise. I did attend a meeting, well, I did complete a webinar on entitled "Community Safety and Resilience." It was an online webinar on the 26th. The discussion covered advances in video technology and to assist in predicting and analyzing natural disasters. It's kind of in line with what we were talking, what we're going to be talking about in terms of the county doing similar things. I attended the West Carroll Rec Council meeting on the 10th of April. The meeting covered, I don't want to steal Eric's report, but it covered a tax report, reporting requirements for affiliated associations. I participated in, again, the New Windsor Beautification Day, which was wonderful for everybody to get out there and kind of gave us a chance to chat and beautify the neighborhood and the town. There are some upcoming recreational events for the town, but I'll leave that for Eric, and if, if you don't have, I'll work with you on that. Safe Kids, I'm sorry, level, there's a Level 5 lacrosse camp on June 19th from 9:00 AM to 3:30. Don't worry about writing this down, because there's a website we can go to, it'll make it all easy. There's a Brazilian soccer clinic. Don't know the difference between Brazilian or English or American, but anyway, there, there's a clinic on 619 for ages four to six. There's actually an older one for seven to 14 as well, so both the same day. And then there's an adult soccer camp, all for the Recreation Council. Upcoming meetings that I have scheduled, I'm going to try to attend one of these, one of the two of these, Safe Kids Coalition meeting on May 9th. That is Tuesday, May 9th at 10:00 AM. I'm either going to try to make that one or the opioid coalition on the 10th at 9:30. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Economic Development, Councilwoman Schultz.
Okay, the Carroll County Downtown's group is not meeting again until May 23rd. I am hoping to be at that meeting. We did hear from Carroll Tourism, and they have some Civil War trail maps that they want distributed statewide, so I will take care of getting those and get them to Town Hall and to the museum for distribution. The water bills are due, which I'm sure this Water and Billings Clerk is going to talk about, so I always want to remind everybody about HSP. There's funds still available for those who can't pay that utility bill. About once a year, I like to remind everybody about some of the economic development and small business resources that exist in the county, and I'm going to send a detailed email with links and everything to, to Kalina and Dana, and they can decide where they want to put that information, but just to go over some of them. The county's Office of Economic Development is one, and they have a sub-office called the Carroll County Workforce Development Office, which is specifically aimed at developing workers, you know, people to work in county businesses. At the Community College, there's the Miller Resources for Entrepreneurs Center, which is a small business resource that's a single point of entry for entrepreneurs. Of course, the Carroll Chamber, and then there's also the Small Business Development Center, which the library runs, and it's part of a state and nationwide network, and they have an events calendar, and a lot of their trainings are free, and a lot of the resources that most of these organizations offer are free or low cost. So like I said, we'll put some of this online, and maybe even in a future newsletter, so that we can get that out there a little bit more often. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Town Manager, Gary.
Okay, I have six items to touch on here briefly. First is the Antietam Broadband Project Update. Antietam Broadband agreed to cover cost of the private utility locating company. We held a meeting on April 26th with Antietam Broadband and AAA locating, and AAA sent the contract late today on Monday, May 1st, and the contract will be between the town and AAA, and AAA will invoice Antietam Broadband directly. Contract was not written this way, so I sent back response to both Antietam Broadband and AAA, and actually, this afternoon, received the revised version. I've reviewed that and forwarded it this afternoon to Attorney Ostrander for her review, and I will give her a call to follow up on that tomorrow. The project will start in the Atlee Ridge subdivision as soon as the contract is received, reviewed, and approved by all three parties. So that's the update on that. Public Works positions, the maintenance worker position has been filled. Dustin Bain will start May 10th next week. The utility and public works maintenance assistant position, we had an interview on, we've had several interviews, we had one on 4/27 with a good potential candidate. Dana contacted him and requested that they, that he submit an application, and then I followed up with him yesterday, so we're waiting to receive that application so we can check, check references and see, see where we want to go. So that's the update on those two positions. The Project Open Space projects, I mentioned prior, New Windsor's set to receive $150,830 in the next round of funding. The project applications are due very early this year, May 20th. So Circuit Rider, Reynolds, and myself met to discuss the projects, and I forwarded him the information that was presented at the April 17th work session, the information that we discussed then. We will do our very best to meet the application deadline. The three projects, just to kind of summary and recap, the half-court basketball court at the Atlee Ridge Butterfly Trail, open space area. I reached out to the other county municipalities for contractors they've used. We have three or four, three or four good options. Mike scheduled a meeting with one of the recommended contractors for tomorrow at 11:00, and we're trying to schedule a second one, and we need to get some budget numbers for the application on that. The skate park, skate park improvements, lights, paving, new equipment. Moving the park and going to an all-new concrete park is not economically feasible based on the cost from the other municipalities that we received and we discussed at the April 17th work session. However, Mike did inform me that we cannot use POS money to do anything with the existing equipment, the paving, et cetera, because POS money was used to construct the park originally. Lighting, expanding paving, new equipment, that's, that kind, those kind of things would be eligible. The fencing, whether removing it, replacing it, is kind of questionable, and Mike is going to look into that further. And Mike is gonna look into that further, look into that in more depth further and go from there. The Sulphur Springs, the third project is the Sulphur Springs Spring House Drainage Improvements and Grading. I have to meet with Director Myers and get some potential contractors for this work. This will likely be, need to be done or broken down into phases. The phase, one phase would be the storm drain improvements, adding an inlet, grading for gravel parking and around the spring house, and installation and compaction of stone parking area. And another phase would be benches, picnic table, roof repairs or replacement on the spring house itself and signage. So that's kind of just an update. We're gonna be pushing to make that deadline of May 20th to submit the applications. Lions Club Park retaining wall project, pre-construction meeting held April 28th. And the construction is to, will start Monday, May 8th and is expected to take approximately three to four weeks to complete. Sprinkler fee increased notice letter. Letter was prepared and reviewed by Mayor Rup, Attorney Ostrander, and Director Myers. And Kalina will be mailing out the letters to the four current commercial property owners who pay the sprinkler fees. And then lastly, the rental housing letter and application. Again, a letter has been prepared and reviewed by Mayor Rup and Attorney Ostrander. Application is complete. Letters, application, and applicable code section will be mailed to the landlords. Kalina has a list of the rental units and landlords. The rental license fee is due June 1st. The fee is $20 per unit if paid prior to July 1st. After July 1st, the fee is $100 per unit per month. If the fees are not paid, the property will be considered in violation of Town Code, Chapter 144, and cannot be legally rented. The rental license will be valid for two years, after which time new application fees and information is required. And that's my report. Any questions?
Garrett couple, if we, it sounds like out of the equation, yes?
Um, well, there's things we can focus on and still, and still be eligible to use POS money. We just can't, yeah. I mean, it depends on the direction we all want to, you all want to go. If we want to do the lighting and we can add some equipment. Like I said, Mike is checking in about the fence, that kind of stuff. So really, that would, direction would come from, from you all.
Right. I mean, one, there's two options. And I, I don't know, you know, where my $3 million request is gonna go. But that could be part of the, the park as well. However, not knowing, could we make the, I mean, we can make the skate park bigger, whether or not we want to do that.
Right.
When it's kind of isolated. However, that is an option. I just don't want to lose the money, but I just don't want to spend it to suspend it. But I'm trying to think of other areas like around the other developments, whether or not Sneed or Summit has any, or Blue Ridge has any open space for any kind of playground or, you know, some kind of recreational facility of some type, even a basketball court or something.
Well, my suggestion, I don't, from my recollection of Sneed or Summit, I don't believe there's any space. I can look on the plans. My recommendation would be let's, let's see what these contractors, contractor tomorrow gives us an estimate on this court and then go from there. We may very well between that and let's see what that's gonna, the estimate's gonna be for that. And then, and then possibly look at, I'd like to get estimates on all this stuff just to see where we are, knowing what we have to work with, and then kind of weed it out from there.
Yeah, just what, May 20th is what, a Tuesday?
Actually, May 20th, I think, is a Saturday.
Saturday, yeah.
It's actually due Friday. Yeah, so it's not, it's not much time.
And we're not gonna be, we will have another meeting.
Yeah, that, that Monday is the work session.
Yeah, okay. So we would have time to, I mean, you have a week to prepare something, but at least we do have, have a few days. And maybe look at other options. We may not, not ever get $150,000 in a year.
Right, right. Let's, 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 let's see, let's try to get some estimates on, on everything if we can.
All right.
Or we should, we should get a ballpark on what that court's gonna run and may surprise us, who knows?
All right.
These days.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I have one question too. I was just wondering if the Lions Club Park would still be open when they're working on the retaining wall or will it be closed?
No, as far as I know, it's, they're not, they're not gonna close it. They're gonna be working pretty much behind, behind the pavilion and accessing their, their construction equipment off of the end of Maple where, where the right turn is there. And I asked them to, they didn't say anything in the, in the, in the pre-construction meeting about closing it. And I did emphasize that at the end of each day to, to have it marked and with orange fencing to keep, kind of delineate the work area and keep, keep citizens and kids, kids out of that while they are working. But it's not gonna be closed.
Okay, thank you.
Gary, I have one thing as well before we move on. As far as the skate park goes, I think it would still be in our best interest to possibly put in lights for, for safety reasons. And I understand not wanting to spend money that we can't use again. Maybe when Mike's looking at things like the lights, he could look at some kind of light fixture that we would be able to move if, if in fact the skate park was going to be moved in the future to the other side of the road, that we would be able to reuse the, the light poles or whatever fixture we choose for that. That's all.
Very good. Thanks.
Thank you. Public Works Director Wayne.
Okay. Yeah, they've been, they were busy late today with the, as Councilman Hall mentioned, the, the work they were doing on the well.
So they were running late with that today.
All right. Community Deputy. Deputy McGinnis.
Good evening, Andrew Martin. Between the dates of April 5th through May 2023, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office responded to 46 calls for service within New Windsor. Out of these calls for service, eight were reportable, which were the following. On 4/6/2023, 12:45, an assistic or injured was reported in the 1,000 block of Green Valley Road. It was the term of the victim. Wasn't safe without additional mental health resources. They were transported to Carroll Hospital Saturday. This case was closed. On 4/9/2023 at 19:16 hours, an incident, indecent incident was reported in the 100 block of High Street. This case is forwarded to investigations and this case remains open. On 4/10/2023 at 11:38 hours, a stolen license tag was reported in the 1,100 block of Old New Windsor Road, and this case remains open. On 4/11/2023 at 11:29 hours, a suspicious activity was reported in the 500 block of Main Street, and this case remains open. On 4/11/23 at 17:43 hours, an accident was reported in the 3,000 block of Vista Court. The accident report was completed for insurance purposes, and this case is closed. On 4/25/23 at 15:18 hours, a disorderly was reported in the 1,200 block of Union Bridge Road. The parties involved were offered and accepted follow-up resources. They responded to the scene to assist, and this case was closed. On 4/27/23 at 15:29 hours, an accident report was reported in the 1,000 block of Green Valley Road. The accident report was completed because it damaged the county property, which involved sign. This case was closed. On 4/29/23 at 12:33 hours, a death from motor vehicle as well as a malicious damage to the same vehicle was reported in the 100 block of High Street. That case remains open for further investigation. All right. On other notes, I just wanted to remind everyone in the community of the Camp of Cops, which is held July 10, 2023 to July 14, 2023. This program is for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students to attend. The program is designed to bring better understanding to law enforcement to youth within Carroll County while working in the atmosphere of a police academy. I will be in attendance this week. And the registration is under $40, so cheap daycare. We have a lot of exciting classes and activities planned. If anyone has any questions about this topic, they can reach out to me. There's a Google document that exists to sign up. Additionally, I have received a few calls in relation to the altering and damaging of political signs in the area. I wanted to remind everyone that such actions will not be tolerated in the community. Signs have a value of approximately $25, and it's not fair for the candidate to replace certain signs out of pocket. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
West Carroll Rec Council.
No, they got to stand up. So recently, we found out that the West Carroll Cheer Program went to Florida and the girls brought home a national championship. The girls rugby team I help coach, we are state champs. We're going for another championship this weekend. It's called the Chesapeake Conference, which is us in Virginia. We win that, we go to the playoffs in New Jersey against teams from Connecticut down to South Carolina. So our girls are kicking, kicking some butt. We aren't due to sponsorship for a couple of kids. They're in Tawnytown, but they're, they follow under West Carroll Rec. Same with mom, she, she works two jobs. She just, she just can't do everything by herself. I think it totals $250. So we're reaching out to different people and, you know, we've had parents cover a few other kids in the program, but this one just kind of came up on us.
Well, I'm gonna stop you. Give me the information and I'll contact Tawnytown Lions Club and New Windsor Lions Club.
That'd be great. That'd be great. These kids deserve a chance, but they're good kids.
They'll guarantee, but I.
Yeah, yeah. And we're covering now as a club, you know, just so they can keep playing. And the only other thing is, man, after COVID, all programs across the board were having real trouble with numbers. Coaching and kids, I really thought after COVID, this stuff would explode. It's not. It's, it's kind of flattened out and, and gone down, you know? I really thought people would want to get outside and, you know, have their kids outside and enjoy the sports that we offer. And we're just not seeing it. Boys lacrosse, I think, we're going to drop on West Carroll. Baseball is struggling. And it's a, it's a hard road right now. And I don't know why. I think kids need to have that kind of organization and just let kids be kids and get out and run some of that energy out of them. So any ideas are always welcome. We're struggling across the board. You know, half our team is from Allen County for rugby, because it's just not a great sport that everybody recognizes. But we're seeing it across the board with, from Tawnytown down to us, Union Bridge. So any ideas would be appreciated if we could just.
Do you, do you have photos of the winning teams, the championship teams that we could put on our Facebook?
I know we have them for rugby because my wife takes them.
Okay.
And I'm asking about the cheer. I'm sure they do.
All right.
That's a big deal. They traveled to Florida and won their division, and that's.
Well, if you don't promote it, they won't know it.
Exactly, exactly.
I just have a question. Do you go into the schools and, you know, try and recruit through the schools at all?
It's funny, you've got to have certain permission to go into the schools. Even just flyers, they have to get approved before they can be handed out into the schools. You know, our biggest recruiting tool is just word of mouth. You know, that's, the schools are funny. My wife's in the school system and she tries to get some things passed and some, some will and some won't. It's just, it's gotta be worded the right way. It's gotta be in a certain date and time. So, yeah, we're trying, but you know, we're, we're a tiny little corner and, you know, West Carroll probably not the richest rec program in the county. Can imagine we're in the top five. You know, a lot of other places have a lot more to offer. And people leave our area to go wrestling in Manchester or down in South Carol. The poor guy, the wrestling coach up here is just dying for kids and all of his good kids are leaving. And they're taking, you know, their brothers and sisters with them. So any ideas are always welcome, you know? Takes more than a couple of people to think of good stuff. So anybody has anything good, just let us know.
All right. Thank you for your effort. Thank you. Fire Chief. Carvel, May 23rd through 27th. Parade is May 24th at 7:00 PM sharp. To my understanding, it will line up outroute 31 in the Brethren Service Center parking lot and come down Church Street and all the way down to the bottom to Main Street and out to the carnival grounds. So 7 o'clock, be ready. All right. Treasurers report.
All right. I did a review this month of our everyday checking accounts and accounts that we have, especially since we made those changes in July, and just to see if they were working in our favor or if we need to reevaluate everything. Since July, when we switched the developer money market fee with the enterprise capital money market fee due to a higher interest rate and a bigger lump of money in the developer fee account, we have gained $15,936.59 in interest.
Excellent.
Just in 10 months. We will be making another deposit because they have sold three lots. So I am predicting by the end of the year, at least $20,000 in interest, free money.
Great.
Think that account's working good for us. I also checked into our enterprise and general fund checking accounts since we switched them to actual business checking accounts. Before, we weren't making any interest off of them and at times paying the service fees. Now for the, we have made $410 in interest off of the enterprise side, and we have also setted the service fees on the general side and actually have made money of about $297. Not a lot, but every little bit helps. I think those accounts are all good and solid, and we should just leave them. On April 20th, I submitted the annual project and expenditures report for the ARPA funds that we received. Everything was in compliance with the April 30th deadline, and we should not have to submit anything until next year. That's all good. And then just a final reminder, election update, May 8th, the deadline for returning any absentee ballots must be returned by 3:00 PM. And then May 9th is Election Day here at Town Hall, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Thank you.
Water and sewer, Building Clerk.
So today was the due date for water bills. Tomorrow, I will be assessing late fees. So after a very long and emotional conversation with Gary, I am giving my resignation. So I will be leaving. My last day will be Friday, May 26th.
Sorry to hear that.
Yeah, very sorry.
Well.
I came across a great opportunity, so.
I'm all about advancing and enhancing your way of life. You have to think about family and yourself sometimes. And I just want to say that you have been the voice and the face of the town, and you've done it well. So you should be very proud. We are proud of you. So good luck. Guess I need another plaque, huh? All right, like to see the smile instead of the.
It was a, it was a very hard decision, but life moves on itself.
All right.
But you know where to find me. I won't ever leave you guys.
October 7th.
Yes. I'm paying it on me in here. Yes, yes, yes.
All right.
That's right, that's right.
Thank you again. Code Enforcement Officer, anything? No. Lehigh, update, nothing. New business, adoption of fiscal year 24 budget ordinance? That should be last month's number, shouldn't it?
Uh, yes.
Oh, four.
I don't remember.
Uh, well, oh, oh, four, oh, five, oh, or 23. Right? Yeah, okay. Do I hear a motion for adoption of fiscal year 24 budget ordinance, oh, four dash, oh, five dash, 23?
I'll make the motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. We have a motion and second to adopt fiscal year twenty-four budget ordinance, oh, four, oh, five, twenty-three. Questions or comments? All those in favor saying, if I'm saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We're good for another year. Twenty twenty-two, is that twenty twenty-two mitigation plan?
Uh, Gary's Gary's battery just died, he's trying to reboot right now.
Okay.
It is, it is twenty twenty-two.
I got it up on the screen.
Yeah. All right, well, we can go over the three hundred and twenty-eight pages if you like.
Plenty of time.
I don't think we really need a, let's see if we look at Town Manager.
Could read it out loud.
Yeah, I'll read it. Twenty twenty-two Carroll County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Email four twenty-one, twenty-three from Valerie Hawkins, Carroll County Acting Director, Department of Public Safety and Emergency Management Manager. On April twen- on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, the Carroll County Board of Commissioners adopted the twenty twenty-two Carroll County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Carroll County will now be eligible to apply for and or receive federal hazard mitigation project grants through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, H M G P, Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program, B R I C, and the Flood Mitigation Assistance, F M A. In order for each municipality to apply for and or receive hazard mitigation funding from any or all of these programs, the governing body of each town must also formally adopt the plan and submit a copy of the documentation of that adoption no later than three sixteen twenty twenty-four. Valerie sent a link to the final version of the plan. I downloaded it and put Gary downloaded it and put it in tonight's folder. The plan is three hundred and twenty-eight pages. Wanted to bring this to attention, discuss how we want to go about adopting the plan and resolution needed, et cetera. And I sent Valerie a message. Uh, wait a minute, do have a response. In order for the town to be eligible to directly apply for and or receive hazards mitigation funding, the plan has to be formally adopted by the governing body, which I guess in this case would be the town council. Then we just need a copy of the adoption document, resolution or similar, so we can submit that to FEMA, which Gary had in there. So that kind of clears it up and well, kind of verifies it. So I guess we'll need a a resolution on that.
Which will not be three hundred and some pages.
No, no. Anything else to add, Gary?
I'm back, sorry about that. Uh, these computers work better when you plug them in. I I I've sitting down and all of a sudden just I lost it, so I looked down and it wasn't.
It wasn't plugged in from this afternoon.
You're leaving and he falls apart.
That's it, Kalina, can't work without you. Yeah, I think you got it covered from what I heard.
Okay.
Tail ended it. Yeah, it's a lot to look through, but we should probably go ahead and get it adopted. I would guess through a resolution is my guess.
Right, and I mean, everything's going to go through the county anyway, so it's not like we're we got to reinvent the wheel or anything. So we're gonna be, we're gonna be adopting their plan naturally, so whenever something happens, we'll be working with the county. So hopefully that doesn't happen, but at least there's funding out there if something does.
Right.
All right, thank you. Old business, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, road paving.
Yeah, Will, if you would pull up the, there's a spreadsheet titled A U R.
That's it, those are the individual sheets, I have those in as well. There's one labeled A U R totals and balance. Where is it? Now scroll down a little bit. Should be in there.
Oh, there we go.
There it is, there it is. Okay, so just while that's coming up, C P finished paving on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth. We got Church Street, Water Street, Robertson Drive and Lower Main, Segment four B only, which four B segment is from Water Street up to High Street. We're all paved. C P has to come back and install some bitumous curbing and blacktop, blacktop paving patching on two water lateral lateral repairs we had to do on Church Street. And they use, they use a technique with new paving where they heat and fuse the paving together to create a seamless repair in those locations where we made the water repair. So you you'll notice the cuts now when they come back and fuse it, it should be, it should be seamless to the eye. We did receive our final highway user revenue dispersment for F Y twenty-three yesterday for a total of thirteen thousand four hundred eleven dollars and forty-four cents. So this spreadsheet basically just gives us the start of things. The Church Street Segment one A was the 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 segment, the lower portion of Church Street that we did in December last year. And then the 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 three hundred and fifty-three thousand five eighty-four is what we started with after we had already paid that segment of of Church Street, the lower section. And then just each section that we did, the totals for those and subtracting out and then adding in the final dis- dispersment that I just mentioned leaves us with a a final balance of forty-six thousand four four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty cents. And we did not, that's all highway user money. We did not use any of the general fund money that was approved up to fifty thousand if we needed it. So it was all good news, overall was was a good, successful project. Working with C P was was great. We did have our issues, as was mentioned, with some waterline leaks on Church Street. But overall, it was a, it was a good, a good project. So we're, we're looking good. We've got some more streets paved and we still carry over a balance of highway user dollars, so.
Thank you and Alan too, I know he was out there for staying on top of it and keep us, keep. I've always said, you know, you can bury sewer lines and water lines, nobody really cares that their tax dollar is being spent that way, but when they see roads improved, they see their tax dollars going to something really helpful and useful and and really making the town look a lot nicer. So thank you for that and thank you, Council, for, we hashed out this months ago. Didn't always agree on everything, but it worked out and we have a balance. So it came in under budget, which is always nice. So thank you, Town Council, for your support on all that. So thank you again, Gary.
Mr. Mayor, could you just, for the, since we have a good sized group here, just explain to people quickly what highway user revenue is.
Highway user revenue, I'm not sure the complete, I think it's by the street mileage that we have in town. But when you go to the gas pumps, there's a gas tax that goes into fund. In the past years, it's been, that account has been robbed to pay for general fund items on the state level. But it's a little more stable and we're going to be receiving additional money this this coming fiscal year for that. It can be used for paving. I think there is also ma- maintenance of roads. Now whether or not you want to spend it on a truck or not, but usually we spend it on blacktopping, paving roads. So for many years, we didn't do hardly anything and here in the last, what, four years, five years, we've really have brought our our streets up. There's always going to be a need. High, Church Street originally was a county road and back in the early eighties. I was on the town council by that time and the county commissioners went to all the municipalities that had county roads in towns and they said, we want you to take them over. Well, Church Street was in horrible shape back in the early eighties. No, no curb some places, busts on sidewalks. So they replaced the, they did two different projects. Upper Church Street was one project and then another company came in and did the lower. That was like eighty-three, eighty-five, I can't even remember exactly. But if we can get forty years out of that again. But I think now we're more on a cycle and we're maintaining our roads a little bit better. So hopefully we get into a pattern, a schedule, basically. The, we do so many roads every, every year, every two years, we can add the money up. We have a certain amount of time to spend it and we also have to document it that it's going to that purpose. And sometimes you can't do, I mean, Church Street would not have been a one-year project due to the, due to the cost of it, so we had a couple of years that we put together. And but when you go to fill up the pump, you might be spending a lot of money, but just remember it's coming, some of it's coming back to New Windsor. So but that's where the highway user revenue comes from. It's been, been a big problem over years. The Maryland Municipal League has fought to get more money for the municipalities. They've done an excellent job over the years. Nothing is in concrete. Hopefully, nobody ever robs that that fund and uses it for other things, so. Yes.
When do we anticipate that we're going to do Lambert Avenue?
Well, we have some more work on that to do because I think there's some water and sewer lines that we need to to address before that's done.
That's correct, Neil.
Right. Anything to add to that, Gary?
No, we we plan on, we plan, just like you said, we plan on do.
As often as as we can, as 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 long as the funding stays with us and we continue to do so, we we will aggressively pave what we can. Lambert and Hillside, we do have plans to upgrade water, water and or sewer lines in those roads, which we want to do that first before we, before we get in and pave. Hillside's critical because it's a feed, a main feed line from the hillside wells into the water distribution system. So, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Old business, I have one thing under old business. I need an alternate for the alternate for election judge. She may not be there available the entire day, so I reached out to Helen Kerr. She lives at, in the Springdale Village and I would like for the council to approve Helen Kerr to be an alternate to, or alternate.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and second to appoint Helen Kerr as the alternate to the alternate, or just an alternate for the election on Tuesday. All those in favor saying, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any other old business? Any residents concerned?
Mr. Carlson.
Mr. Carlson, come forward, state your name and address, please, sir. And let me get my timer out here, hold on.
I know, that's what I'm concerned about. Dick Carlson, twenty-eight oh eight.
I'm at.
Wanted to get a head start.
Go ahead.
Dick Carlson, twenty-eight oh eight, Union Square Road, Windsor. Am I allowed to ask or register a concern about the qualifications of the candidates, the three new candidates of the upcoming election?
I'd say yes, I mean.
A technical concern, by that I mean whether the candidate meets the legal requirements to run as opposed to an opinion be, you know, like, I don't think that person is qualified.
No, no, not that.
According to the Charter of New Windsor, Chapter C, council members shall have resided in the town for at least two years immediately preceding their election and shall be qualified voters of the town. I researched this afternoon of the Frederick County and Carroll County land records does not show that the candidates own or reside in Carroll County. Any of the three. The two that operate the business are residents according to what the land records say of Frederick County. And my concern is they don't meet the criteria for running for town council in the town of New Windsor. How can they represent New Windsor? And the other one, his son owns a property in the town of New Windsor. And that's where the property is recorded, a junior. And I just want to register that concern. I, I just need to hear from somebody whether this is acceptable or not.
I can answer that. The election judge, chief judge supervisor has approved all five candidates to be eligible to run for town council.
They are, they are all registered to vote with Carroll County. Carroll has, and that's where we get our list of registration from. You don't need to own property in New Windsor in order to run. So if someone lived with a child who owned a house or if someone was a rental property, that's perfectly legitimate so long as you reside here. I know that the land records, the S D A T records indicate that at least two of the candidates own property in another jurisdiction and may at one point or another have lived there. But they have certified both to the town and to Carroll County where they're registered through to vote that they reside or at least maintain a primary residence in Windsor. You can own property in more than one place. In fact, our former mayor, Mr. Pierce, owned property here and owned property in our own city. So it is, it is legally possible to do. I I can't speak to to anything more than that because I don't know. But the issue has been brought up, was referred to the Board of Election Supervisors who did do.
Okay, now is that Carroll County?
No, that's the town of the Windsor, Board of Election Supervisors. They are, under the Charter of the sections that you refer to, they are the body that is tasked with assuring that candidates meet the technical legal requirements. And I know that at least one of the Windsors has been registered to vote in Carroll since eighteen. The other has been registered to vote since twenty-one, but as we all know, not everyone registers to vote as soon as they move to an area. Some people never change their driver's license for years. So to the extent we have that information, our Board of Election Supervisors is satisfied that they reside here long enough that they are legitimate to run.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Will? All right. Announcements, Carvel again, May twenty-third through twenty-seventh, Parade, May twenty-fourth, seven P M. May sixth, Balk Trash, eight to twelve. Election, May ninth, seven A M. to eight P M. Town Hall. And we will have one new council member. And since I don't know what any of the three candidates outside of our council members positions are on things, there will be a big part of the work session dedicated to finding out their positions on issues and projects that we have going on. I feel as president of the council, as mayor of the council of the town, that we need to have this information for staff and fellow council members to be able to work in harmony and to move forward for the town residents. Right now, I could not tell you any of that, so other than our two council members who I have a lot of faith in and trust in and I know their positions, so that will be on the agenda for next work session. Any other announcements, anything going on with?
Yes, New Windsor Heritage is celebrating its fortieth birthday with free cake and lemonade and iced tea at the museum and maybe if it's nice to be able to spill out into the new park a little bit, so.
When is it?
It's the Saturday from two to four.
Okay, this Saturday? Two to four. All right. Thank you, everyone, Sharon again, thank you. Don't make yourself a stranger.
I will.
We'll shoot for the last Saturday in April for unification day.
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right, okay. And again, thank you staff for putting the budget together. We're in. We're in strong position, so greatly appreciate all the council's support over the years for that. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor saying, if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Okay.